Good evening. I'd like to call the June 10, 2013 Board of Education meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with loyalty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is to review the minutes of the previous meetings. We've had three meetings that require approval since our last time we got together. Minutes of May 13, 2013, our regular meeting a month ago, our workshop meeting on May 28, and then the executive session on June 3, which is an executive session with the Joint Board of Finance. We should take those all in one step. Do I have a motion to do so?
I propose we separate them because I need to abstain.
Okay. All right. Very good. So, 3.1, May 13, 2013, do I hear a motion for their approval?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any comments, corrections needed? Carried none, then call for the vote on them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So passed. 3.2, the 28th of May workshop, motion to pass those to the record.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any abstentions or other comments?
I abstain because I was not there.
Okay. So, any other corrections? Carried none, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor except for one abstention. And 3.3, the executive session, joint meeting with the Board of Finance, which was a partial board, the group that actually is working on negotiations. Do I have approval for those minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Made and seconded. Any comments? Very minors. Executive session, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then those abstaining were not the ones that were not on the committee and were not present. Okay. Move on to item number four on the agenda, which is review of the financials from the previous months. And I happen to be the reviewer as well, so I just will go back through things here. We just came off a meeting with the Finance Subcommittee and went through the bills for the record and had Q and A on those. Basically, the presentation by the Finance Department is that we're on target for our expenditures for this past month within our targets, and we're looking forward to the end of the year projections being under expended by a slight amount as we close out the end of year, which we are legally required to and have never done otherwise. The details are on the sheets, have been put out to you. Don't know if there's any questions here at this point in time, people that weren't at the Finance Committee meeting. We had a number of issues that we discussed and presented at that meeting, which for more clarification than anything else. Is there anything else that would like to come forward?
Move to approve.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Number five is public forum for items on tonight's agenda, that is, on the next, the actual agenda itself, for topics. Is there anybody who would like to address the board? Yes, come on up to the podium, please, Chris. Identify yourself.
My name is Jim Wall, 1364 Little Meadow. I think I know most of you. I had a question. I didn't look at the agenda, but I think math curriculum is on it. Is that right? My question is regarding algebra in 7th grade, and I don't have the history, but my understanding was that it was offered at one point, and now it's not offered in 7th grade. Is that true?
Well, I'll defer here to a quick summary by end.
Okay, I'll respond. It's really not a curriculum piece, because this is just the content, the grade level content, and we're still working on the sequencing and the, and how we're going to provide any kind of extra work at each grade level. So that's really not part of the curriculum piece, and I can't address exactly what's going to be going on in 7th grade tonight, because I'm not, I wasn't prepared for that question, but I'll certainly find out and get back to you.
Well, I had heard there won't be algebra in 7th grade, so that's my understanding of it, but it was offered previously? Was it offered in previous years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, for a small group of children. It was.
Because there's a small group?
When we had, pardon?
Because there's a small group at Baldwin right now who are doing pre-algebra work.
And we're working on that.
If they go into 7th grade, there's no place for them to go, basically.
Right. We're working on that right now.
So that is being worked on?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Thanks for your questions, and things like that then are directly individual for small Spengers students in particular, then to address the process of the principal at the school, and then like Ann and Paul at the administrative level to find backup. But I think in general, the quick, another answer to that, Chris, is that the board is aware of issues such as that, and trying to identify targeted groups that then have some specific needs, and how we can best address those needs in context of what we're providing for all our students and provide for them. Excellent. Well, thank you for joining us here and letting us know, so we can continue to keep in the loop and know your concerns. Other questions for public forum? If not, we'll take and move on to communications, number six. Does any board members have communications to say?
I wasn't alone, but I received two communications over the last month regarding the math curriculum. One, a parent concerned about the ability of the proposed math curriculum to address the needs of kids who have advanced beyond their particular grade level expectations as stated. And then a second communication that I think went to all of us today from two people who are concerned particularly about the approach, if I'm correct, and please, someone play Ben if I've misrepresented it, about the approach of, their interpretation of the approach of the Common Core State Standards regarding the teaching of math, and the concern that the, the new expectation of communication of understanding verbally and written, what's going on in particular math problems that are being addressed, is perhaps going to trip up unfairly some children who are very adept at doing the math problems, but less adept at that particular level in communicating what they're doing.
Verbally.
Verbally, or how they're doing it. It was, I thought it was actually a very interesting letter. And please, other people add if I have misrepresented it, but that seemed to be a, the root of the concern.
I think that was a good summary. And I know that Dr. Keen replied to that correspondence today.
For what?
And part of that response was to note that this is part of the conversation that we hope to engage in, in a community forum that we have scheduled for June 20. And in fact, I think it can blend in some of both of the communications, where we will be talking about supporting some of our higher achieving students throughout the school system, and I think over the last several weeks, the conversation has really started to develop an organic focus on the area of mathematics. So we will be talking more broadly, but there will certainly be conversation about mathematics and supporting those students who are achieving highly on June 20 at Adams in the Chorus Room at 6:30 in the evening, and we will be sending out an invitation district-wide to encourage people to join us at that community forum.
So again, June 20, 6:30 at Adams is the math forum that will be held, so.
Not restricted to math.
Not math specifically, but I think math will be a healthy part of the conversation as I've watched the conversation develop over the last several weeks.
So other than that, any other communications? Thank you.
I had one communication regarding the teacher contract negotiation, specifically a piece in New Haven Register about the, basically, New Haven negotiations in terms of looking at how they are able to build in evaluation of teachers and the potential to actually get rid of teachers that may not be meeting their standards even beyond the tenured portion. It was basically, you know, lauding that position. So the communication was, have we thought about an approach like that? I'm not on the negotiating team with the teachers, so I was not really prepared to answer that specifically, but I don't know if anyone's willing to comment on that at this point, if we could look at that, or if that's an issue for.
I think most broadly, the work that was done in New Haven around teacher evaluations in large part predated the state's change in legislation, which has changed evaluation for teachers and administrators statewide. So while it was important for New Haven to make sure that they identified those changes in their local contract, as we move forward, the legislation at the state level sort of creates an umbrella for expectations for teacher supervision and evaluation and, and level of performance required for continuing employment. So we have been working on teacher evaluation. It's one of our action items for this evening, but I don't believe it's an item that, that may be addressed very specifically in our negotiations with the association.
Do you feel that's an issue at all, I mean, in the district?
No, no, I don't. I think it's something that we do well in Guilford, and I think that we've responded well to the state legislation additionally. I think a larger, more complex district like New Haven was probably wrestling with some concerns that may have been somewhat different than the ones that we're, that we work with locally. And I received a similar communication. I've been part of a similar conversation with another community member.
Okay. Thank you. Next is student representatives, number seven, and we have two of our three here tonight, so we're missing one. I'm sure, is he going to be here with us, or haven't you?
He was going to be. We haven't, we hadn't heard otherwise that he was not going to come, but there's no sign of him yet, so.
Okay.
I think that we could probably impose on Mr. Guino to accept Andrew's stead and make sure that the recognition gets delivered on.
Right. Yep, exactly. That'd be wonderful that way. So with that, is my honor as we're chairing, as I'm chairing the meeting tonight, is to honor you two, and the three of you, for actually serving on board for this past year. So if you would step up here, and we'll take and get within eye shot of the camera. This is, we have to open up the goodies here because things get sealed so well that, well, the names are on the outside, yes. Yep. For that, so.
Like this, in a car park.
So, come on over here, we're, okay, it's where we can't, can or can't see, because there's nothing else, so. You want, you want to hear the mic? Okay.
Step forward so we can get on the camera.
Okay. So you guys step right up on my left-hand side here, you guys are the center of attention. So Barbara, come on up. On behalf of the Guilford Board of Education, I'd like to thank you very much for your dedicated services past years, your input to the board that you have faithfully given over the number of meetings that's been on since you started last September, last fall. We hope that that experience yourself has been worthwhile of your time, and that you'll use that for further, further public service as you develop your styles, as you go on for your educational aspirations and graduation and so forth. So first, do you, Aleah, am I getting it right? Okay. I always want to get tongue-tied there, make sure I don't get embarrassed. Again, on behalf of the board, here's a certificate of appreciation and recognition for your service to us, the Board of Education, and thank you very much for your time in doing that. Barbara, step up for, on behalf of.
For you, Mike?
Thank you so much.
Okay. I particularly want to mention how unique these two people have been at our board meetings, bringing us a lot of information about what goes on in the elementary schools, which we often didn't get, and even participating in some of, in these two meetings, we talked about where you had some input into the meeting, into the discussion, which was much appreciated. And we hadn't had that before. I think you helped us in our discussion about the high school, if, that's right, the grade point, that's the right.
Yeah, oh yeah.
And, yes, I know that was very important to you, and you participated in that discussion, which we much appreciate. Thank you very much for doing a great, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We've learned a lot.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Mr. Guino to come forward, and on behalf of Andrew, who's not here, to accept his plaque and abstentia, and to make sure that he gets it delivered here, so.
Absolutely.
Barbara, would you please do that? Thank you very much for your being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Guys, great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
My pleasure.
And also attached here for. Get a gift certificate. A gift certificate that's in here. Thank you. Let me take the gift certificate with me. So don't, don't lose that.
Don't throw the cardboard away.
Exactly. There's Andrew as well, so that's important to remember on how to disappear.
Thank you. Here. I just want to say something real quick. Just real quick, I promise. Thank you very much for this opportunity. It's so rare that we get a chance to feel like we really get to make an impact on our community, but it's wonderful to know that the Board of Education is so dedicated to us, that they're willing to truly have us at each meeting, listening to you guys, and let us have that input. So thank you for the opportunity, and as somebody who hopes to someday be some form of an educator, thank you for your service that you've done for us. It means the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And as Bill has said before, then you're welcome to stay if you'd like, but we also realize you have other things, you'd like to move on.
Yeah, I think the illness has come over us after.
Tonight, we're accepting, yeah, there's 50 more new inductees into the National Honor Society here at the high school this evening, so both of us are going to go congratulate all of those new members.
Mike and Aleah, you also get to take your name placers with you. That's one last door prize that you get.
Oh, wonderful. That's awesome. Thank you very much.
But it keeps a college there.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening to you.
Thank you, Barbara, for assisting with that. Appreciate that. Number 8.1 is the superintendent's report, and we've got an update on the teacher evaluation.
And as I only have one item, which is repeated in an action item, I was going to waive tonight's report until we get to the action item in 9.6.
Excellent. So you want the 10-second report here, so.
Everybody looks shocked. It's like I've never done that before.
Somebody's going to have to tell Mr. Ross.
We'll predict it with 9.6 time against the 8.1 time. So with that, we'll move on to the board agenda itself, and first one is 9.1. We've got several personnel and things on the exhibit that we're emailing to you, and so first we've got two resignations for purpose of retirement. Marcy Parks, who has been with us at the Lake Selmacher School for 12 years of service to retire, and Joanne Grace, grade two at Cox, for 37 years worth of service. So again, some more combined retirees of almost 50 years, 49 years between the two of them. So I have a motion to accept their resignation, or their retirement.
Gives me great pleasure to recommend these people for retirement and to join many of us as retired teachers. It's a wonderful life.
I will second that, and unfortunately, I don't know Joanne Grace, but both of my children had Marcy Parks, and she is a phenomenal, phenomenal educator, so I would just like to say thank you to her for, for her 12 years of service to Guilford Lake Selmacher.
And I know Joanne Grace, who I used to know as Joanne Hubbard, but is now Joanne Grace, and as a matter of fact, she taught in, one of my children in nursery school, my children who are in their 40s now, so she's been teaching them all.
Well, she's eligible for retirement, and I need to reflect that I am as well, because we're through the Guilford school system within a year of each other.
Okay.
And she also taught several of my children as well, as Ms. Hubbard, as opposed to Grace at Noah's, so.
Right. Congratulations to both of them.
So with that, we've got a motion on the floor to, well, thanks to accept their retirement. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. The next three are resignations and non-renewals, so I'd like to ratify the, those for Sarah Blum-Smith, Kirk Samuelson, and Rachel Martinich, who served us, so. Is there a motion for those?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next are great ones to act on here. 9.2 is to approve a $3,000 donation from the Guilford Foundation to the Interacts Rotary Club here at the high school, and they've got a letter in your file here that's from Rick asking us to accept that, and for the, our policy, we need to ratify that. If you have any other, okay, so we've got a motion.
Second.
Is there any other comments you have for what the funds are going to be, they're using with the funds?
The intention is to purchase new band uniforms, and Mr. Masenti and I will be sure to forward the board's appreciation should you accept this.
Okay. Fantastic. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. So that's a great thanks to the Guilford Foundation and the Interact Youth Advisory Club. Next is 9.3, potential action here, awaiting bid requirements for technology at lease, and I'll ask Dr. Meyer to fill us in on that. The Finance Committee got some updates from the Finance Department on just an hour ago.
This is for a $600,000 lease for a technology program, and we requested bids from three companies. Two responded, the third one did not. We got two bids. One is from a current bank that we have, who have financed previous technology leases for 1.408 percent, and the other from another bank who we used in '08, '09 for 1.570. We discussed this, and while in general, we feel that waiving bidding is not the best thing in the world, but in this particular case, since we did ask for bids from three companies, two responded, the bids certainly are very favorable, they're lower than our current rate of 1.567, and that in the environment where interest rates appear to be creeping up a bit, our feeling on the Finance Committee is that, given everything considered, that we should waive the requirement and go with J.P. Morgan Chase's low estimate, low bid of 1.408 percent for a technology five-year lease of $600,000.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded that we can approve this lease, and that be noted that three bidders were contacted, and we did actually get two in, and we are going, recommending the lowest one, which is also, who has done the last three years in a row as far as the lease for it. Of note on that is because we've done the paperwork with them before, then the legal side of things is smoother, and our cost to actually do that is another savings.
Everything's already in place, so it'll just continue.
Right, and then reviewed, and basically they've got their standard contracts, which don't need to be, you know, a new organization's one to be read by our legal team to make sure from the town standpoint that we're covered appropriately. So all those in favor of accepting the bid from J.P. Morgan Chase for the $600,000 technology lease that is put forth in our budget proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Next statum is our 9.5, textbook recommendation that has come forth, we had previous discussion on that.
Mr. Chairman, could we just do 9.4? You've approved waiving the bid. We also need to, we need to approve the resolution.
Excuse me. Yeah, thank you very much for drawing mine. I have the paperwork right in front of me here. So as tied in with that, then I would like to take and actually have the resolution here that has been printed out. It is in your board packet that you've got. It's a two-page document that is the legal one. The title of it is Town of Guilford Board of Education Resolution Authorizing a Lease Purchase Financing to Finance the Acquisition by the Board of Education of Technology Equipment, and it's got the legal language in here. It needs to be signed by either the Chair or the Vice Chairman of the Board of Education that we actually had that done. So does anybody have any questions on the paperwork for the resolution in front of you? Would you mind if I don't read it, since you have it in front of you?
I think we should waive.
We should waive the reading.
We'll waive the reading, for sure.
Except, okay, so waiving the reading, all those in favor of authorizing the Chairman or the Vice Chairman to sign the resolution is in front of you.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay. Thank you very much for executing that tonight, so go on to the process. Thank you very much for putting that out there. 9.5 is the textbook recommendation, so now on to you. Sorry to try and jump the gun and get right onto more exciting things and resolutions.
Well, this is an exciting thing, and I'll ask Julia Chap, if you would, to come up to the podium, and in the mean, meanwhile, just to give you some background information, we are designing a new Advanced Placement course for juniors called Advanced Placement Language and Composition. We're very excited about that. We're working on the curriculum right now. This would be an elective course, but it would be something that we would be offered, and Julia is going to talk to you a little bit about the textbook that we are recommending to you tonight as a receive item for this course.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. The idea behind the course itself, and maybe one of the primary differences between AP Language and Composition versus AP Literature and Composition, is that Language and Composition really focuses on rhetorical analysis. And so the textbook that the committee has selected, after looking through a number of sample textbooks that Cara Davis, who will be teaching the course, received at the AP training in Vermont last summer, we looked through those books, we listed them for you on our textbook approval form. This one offers a couple of things that we find particularly attractive for the price point. One is that it's not going to become outdated in the sense that rhetorical analysis doesn't change. You know, the Romans were doing rhetorical analysis. Quintilian talked about a good man speaking well. We would update that now, make it a little more gender neutral, but the idea is that if you are a good persuasive speaker or writer, then you are, you have noble, a noble cause behind the speaking and the writing. And so what this course offers our students the chance to do is to look at not only text, so there's a real focus on nonfiction text, but also visual arguments. Think about how in the 21st century, we're bombarded with not only text that comes to us in the written form, but in visual form as well, whether it's documentary, whether it's a commercial on television, whether it's a still picture or fixed photo on the side of a bus that's driving by. And so what we're hoping by adopting this textbook is that we can use it as a fundamental rhetoric text combined with the real-world application of rhetoric today.
So we need to, we just wanted to present it to you tonight. We're passing it around right now with an option for you, for you to review briefly, and we will have it in our office for the month, but certainly it is something that you can research online, too. Everything's an argument. It is very current, and there are some very, very interesting chapters and activities associated with this particular text, and we think it's going to be an exciting course, and that will be part of the curriculum update that I'll be doing next month for you.
Is it available in electronic form, a text?
Yes, it is available in electronic form, and it's available in electronic form at different price points. So you could adopt the electronic version that is simply the rhetoric text without the readings, which would be a lower price point, or you can adopt the textbook with all of the readings associated with it as well.
I haven't gotten my chance to. I haven't gotten my chance to put my hands on it, but it looks heavy. And I keep thinking about kids and their backpacks and how much that weighs, and shouldn't we be moving more and more towards digital as opposed to written?
I think that that's our long-term goal, and unfortunately, we're not at that place to start the course now with that kind of capacity with the technology in the building. We're hoping, obviously, that this, too, shall pass, that, you know, kids won't be doing a workout when they walk down the hall with their backpacks.
What is included, then, for electronic supporting documents with this $65 price point for the book?
I used the textbook a few years ago. It was an earlier incarnation of it, and at the time, it came with software called iSite and iClaim. The iClaim software is a wealth of visual and prose text that offers popular culture connections to different features of rhetorical analysis. So it will have a ready reference to something like logos, pathos, ethos, with multiple examples associated with it. It's a nice way to sort of illustrate for students how those appeals will work in an argument, and that's just one of maybe 50 different rhetorical terms that are embedded within the software. The iSite software is associated much more with research. So it sort of takes that iClaim to the next level of how do you embed or incorporate research? How do you evaluate sources in your research to make sure that they're valid and reliable sources and so forth?
Okay. So that's what's included here, but not a, not a version of the whole text that can be used if a student wishes?
Yes, there is a full text version that's offered electronically, whether you use it with any, you can use it with any e-reader, is my understanding, whether it's Mac or PC technology.
Right. So is that what's included with this price?
I believe that the price point for the electronic version is similar. I don't have the exact price with me this evening, but I could certainly research it and have it ready for you.
Which way you're, we're planning going and how far on that question? Okay.
We can have that for you when we ask for your approval.
So we've, Chris?
Just some basic questions, I'm sorry. So this is for AP Language and Composition?
That is correct.
And how many students take that on a yearly basis?
This would be a new course offering. Our initial course will be approximately 20 students, and it would take the place of one section of our Accelerated English III class. The course will be a marriage of American literature, so we're still fulfilling that American literature piece that's part of our regular English III curriculum. And imposed and embedded within that is the AP Language and Composition curriculum that has a much more focus on the rhetorical analysis piece. So it's a hybrid course in that sense.
Are those two different AP exams or?
Yes, they are.
So have we not taken that AP exam, or have students generally not taken that from?
Generally speaking, no. There are, and I'm not going to say it's unprecedented. I think that there have been a minority of students who have opted to take that without any real preparation for it. The nice thing, I think, about the Language and Comp course is it is a, it's a nice foundational piece into the Literature and Composition course in that because the focus is really on diction, syntax, and sort of how language is constructed, it makes the literary analysis piece much more accessible to the student going into their 12th grade year. Not to say that our stu, that we're not attempting to prepare our students for that. It's more that this is a much clearer alignment from 11th to 12th grade AP curriculum.
I might want to add, too, that, as you well know, in 2014, 2015, our 11th grade students will be participating in the Smarter Balance Assessment that will be seeing just how well the Common Core State Standards have been implemented in English Language Arts. And one of the big shifts is more opinion and argument writing, so that students understand not only claims but counterclaims, how to present yourself in a very convincing way, how to analyze others' arguments as well, and form rebuttals. And so we really feel that this is a move in the right direction. If, you know, we're, we're starting it to see, okay, we're hoping it might grow, but we believe that we can certainly fill one class this year, and we have a teacher trained and ready to go, and we are developing the curriculum right now. And so we're hoping that it'll grow in the future because we know that it's a really, really important part of communication in today's world.
Is this, is this a course that kids have signed up for already, or this has happened since course selection in April?
All we did was poll students for interest to see if we had enough to actually run the course. We didn't want to, we didn't want to waste your time and everyone's time.
Oh, no, no, that, that.
But yes, so we know that for certain, we have 20 students who are, and if, who are ready to take it. If, for whatever reason, the course doesn't go through, then what would happen is we would offer a third section of our English III accelerated course, and they would take that.
So I guess you can't judge a book by its cover, but you can skim very quickly.
It's pretty colorful.
Yeah, thanks. You can skim through the index. It really seems quite fascinating, actually. I mean, it really sounds like a great course.
I think the U.S. Congress and Senate ought to take, read it and...
Oh, no.
It really sounds, it really sounds exciting.
Would you like to audit the course?
Convincingly.
Are there Board of Ed slots in the class? Is that what you're hoping for?
I will not make any promises.
Is this any part of the Common Core State Standards, you pushing more towards the nonfiction? Does that have anything to do with this? I mean, that it's, it's more geared towards?
Really, when we're, we're talking about this particular course, we're thinking more of the writing standards around argument and opinion writing and reading, too. But it's the same, you know, it's like she said, we go back to, you know, medieval or even, you know, before, you know, Greek and Roman literature, and we know that that was a very important skill. And we still think it's an important skill, and we haven't done as much of it. We still are doing the literature. We are looking at a child's total reading diet, knowing that in the real world, he'll probably be reading more nonfiction than he will be fiction as an adult. But he'll still be reading, we hope, a lot of fiction. But his total reading diet in high school is about three-fourths and a four, three-fourths nonfiction, but thinking that's also in science class and social studies class and all the other courses he's taken, as well as, you know, in his English Language Arts course.
The place that this really aligns with the Common Core is in that focus on a more sophisticated approach to writing a complete argument, rather than teaching students a really structured keyhole essay structure that they, they plug and chug through. And it's a good illustration of the fact that the Common Core is, in fact, grounded on, you know, a whole tradition of academia and education that goes all the way back to Roman rhetoric. It's not something that is brand-new and not, you know, unheard of. It is something that is really grounded in some solid foundations, and it's a more sophisticated argument, rather than the approach that may have been possible in some, some other standards that we've been tied to in the past.
With that, then, we're on to receiving it, which we've done. Thank you very much for your expertise.
Thank you.
For our policy, then, we've, we'll act on this a month from now, so we've got the 30-day review period for both the public as well as the Board of Ed. In that regard, if there are any questions, then direct them to the high school office or superintendent's office. And the book is on file, and will be at the superintendent's office at Lathrum House for anybody in the public who would like to take and review that. So thank you very much. And that's 25 copies. It's a total of $1,625. Turn over my sheet here, right? That would be the budgeted request for that particular new text.
Is this going to be part of our workshop reading?
Summer of each book. Hundred pages a week.
There you go.
Be done with it in three months. Okay. Item number 9.6. We can start the stopwatch now for your report.
This will, this will, I think this will be a very brief item. Previously, we brought to you the work of the Evaluation Committee that had put together an in-house teacher evaluation plan, as well as a proposal to the state that we would adopt the state-proposed administrative evaluation plan for the year. We received feedback dated May 10th from Sarah Barzey's office on the plans that we had submitted. The administrative plan passed without comment. The teacher plan received five areas of comment. We forwarded those to you electronically in an attempt to save on paper materials because our plan runs to about 76 pages at this point. What I can tell you is, having digested the comments, having discussed them with both Sarah Barzey and Sharon Fuller at the State Department, I think it's fair to characterize the comments as minor. I don't think they changed the content of our plan, and what you see in, what you received electronically were those changes. The first two were simply to include more overtly some information that they were looking for. We took the timeline for the plan and put it into a table calendar format and placed it at the very front of the process, so that readers would see how the year unfolds in a calendar format. The planning, so that we will thoroughly calibrate all of our evaluators, so that we are approaching teaching and learning in the classrooms through a common set of eyes and expectations, has been added as an appendices to the document. And then in some other areas around the whole school goal, we more clearly stated on page 27 that the whole school goal would be an aggregate of multiple measures. Around professional development, on page 10, we more clearly stated that professional development will be informed and guided by the results of this evaluation process. And around plans for teacher improvement, for teachers who are identified in the developing area, we made it clear that teachers who are identified for more than one year as developing will receive support from a variety of other professionals, rather than may receive support from those professionals. We have distributed these modifications through the members of the Evaluation Committee. Committee members seem to be comfortable with these changes. I think that they are more editorial in nature than, than really content in nature. But as the board will ultimately be approving this document, these have not gone back to the state. We wanted to bring them to you tonight, ask for your approval, and we will resubmit the plan with these changes tomorrow morning, and then anticipate approval. We have already begun the training process in district. We've been visiting all seven buildings at faculty meetings to give an overview of the shape of the evaluation process. Administrators have started piloting the new lens with an electronic tool in classrooms, looking at teaching and learning, and always in pairs or small groups, so that we're looking through the new tool and then debriefing and talking and challenging each other on what we bring away from that. We have two days of professional development and training scheduled for June 27th and 28th. We have three days of administrator training and retreat over the summer, and we will return to school, ready to launch these plans, with one-third of our certified teaching staff and 100% of our certified administrative staff next year. And again, I will say, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that the local committee has done, and our ability to maintain a focus on, on formative developmental supports to help all teachers really hone their practice and be better every day in the classroom at what they do with our students. So we would ask for your approval to resubmit the plan.
So moved.
Okay, so we've got a motion that is in our packet. We will see full documentation. It's motion made seconded. Is there any further questions, concerns?
This motion is to resubmit to the state?
To resubmit to the state.
Are we, at some point, moving to adopt it in our district, or is that a separate?
I would, I would suppose that if we're approving it to submit, and it finally comes back with the okay, that, that would presuppose the approval.
Right.
Once the state approves it, then it's part of our...
This is Paul's submission to us. I'm taking it administratively, making this twist of words back again, but our approval of this tonight, to submit it, is our approval of the plan that he's put forward on our behalf, that this will be adopted in Guilford in order to meet the state regulations.
I could certainly bring it back for your approval to finalize the process, but having received the state approval, it really doesn't leave us a window to make any changes without then needing to resubmit, and there's no process for that.
I remember your original proposal came before this board, and we approved it. It was then now sent to the state. They came back with some suggestions. You're amending the original approval, and tonight, I think, we're being asked to accept the amendments and resubmit it.
And they really were more editorial kind of changes. There was nothing of substance.
No, I don't think in any way, they didn't challenge the, the major latitudes that we, that we, you know, we made some significant, we diverged significantly from the state plan in some significant areas. Primarily, our plan is more holistic in nature. It relies more on a professional dialogue between the teacher and his or her evaluator across the school year. It does build that dialogue on the same four areas and the same measures that the state required, but I think ours is much more formative and much more developmental in nature, and none of these comments challenged any of those, any of those philosophies within our document or the processes around those. They really only asked us to articulate some of those more clearly.
These are very minor, non-substantive. I think it's very impressive you turned around the 76-page valuation with these minor tweaks.
When, when, if you want to change it, how, what's the process of changing it?
It is open to annual amendment from the state. So in fact, I appreciate that question. We have made it very clear in our initial rollout to the staff that while this is, in fact, an implementation year, we're implementing, with only a third of our staff in the document, we have the opportunity to, to amend the document annually. So I have very clearly called this our local pilot year, because it's inevitable that we will learn something through this process, and we'll be back before you, asking to make adjustments before submitting it next year. I think it's, it's a growing, organic document, and it will probably change almost every year for the first few years, until we get something that we're very comfortable with that is very much a local, a local tool.
Which, which part gives you a little bit of, maybe not concern, but you think might change the most next year? You think has the most dynamic portion of this document?
I think those are two different questions. The one that gives me the most concern is the fact that we are being required to hitch our focus on formative development, supportive teachers, to a summative rating system that's being required across the nation in about 36 different states. So we're working hard to have it both ways. I think the things that are going to change will be some of the details. I think that we will see change around how teachers are expected to write academic goals for their students that are informed by standardized and non-standardized assessments and measures of student performance. As we move into the Common Core State Standards, we're going to be looking at our assessment calendar and thinking about how we measure student performance. It's going to have to change, so we're going to be looking at how those measures need to change. Right now, the plan still calls for teachers to overtly connect their goal writing to both the CAPT and the CMT, if you are in a subject area or grade level that contributes to those standardized tests. We know at best that those assessments have one administration left to them, and even that administration is probably going to be adjusted in some way. So I know without question that the goal writing and the assessments on which the goals are written will change, both because we're going to figure it out better and because the state's going to change the metrics on us.
When, when does the state usually put their input into this? Like, you think you see the state input before the beginning of next year, before we get to take a look at it again?
No, this process has been ongoing. The state has continued to modify expectations and issue new guidance as late as last week on this model. And I will suggest that we were well-served by creating a local model, because I think it has allowed us to plan a little more proactively, and we began rolling some elements of ours out to our staff weeks ago, which feels late and is late, but is, in fact, ahead of districts that have been waiting for the state framework for teaching and learning to be released. It was released last week, I believe, in draft form.
How many other districts have chosen to go their personalized route versus the state framework?
I don't, I haven't received any count, and I certainly don't know how many have had local plans approved. So I know of many that have adopted the state plan. I know of a few who worked on local plans. We actually were able to submit ours at one of the original submission dates. We did not ask for extension, so we've received our feedback and modifications before a few others. And there's really three buckets. You could, you could adopt the state plan. You could adopt the state plan with minor changes and just have to write to those changes, or you could do something that was wholly new. We thought we were going to... We thought we were going to submit a hybrid, but in fact, what we ended up doing was submitting something that was wholly new because even the parts that are similar to the state plan, we rewrote. So we submitted something that was completely new and was all our own in all 76 pages. And on time.
I think that's great. One of the interesting things that I see in this plan is the parent feedback goal and specifically whole school surveys of what, you know, those goals should be. I just want to ask logistically, what are your plans for when that would go out and how that would be developed, the survey?
So the baseline was what we issued earlier this year around the Safe School Climate Survey that was conducted. As we move forward, what we will probably do is take that Safe School Climate Plan, embed some of the sample questions about school administration, school climate, school culture that we've recently received from the state in partnership with a private vendor. Annually, we will issue a survey to parents, students, and staff members. Each year, we will disaggregate that information by building. The building administration will look at that information, pull themes from that, and every teacher in the building will then write a goal that connects to some of those common themes. So it is not a survey that necessarily says, "How's Mr. Freeman doing as a teacher? Let's rank him 1 to 10." But it's a survey that says, "How are we doing? What do you see as strengths and weaknesses, areas of concern as a community?" And then each of us writes an individual goal informed from that feedback that we get from our community. It'll be an annual survey that will be probably disseminated in the middle of the year. As the schools come back every September, the principal will be ready to roll out the results of that survey. This is what we received this year. This is what it looks like, and give areas of theme that each teacher would be required to write a goal to. So each teacher will write academic goals about student performance. That makes up 45% of the evaluation. Each teacher will write one of those parent feedback goals. That makes up 10% of his or her evaluation. And then each teacher, just through part of being in the team, signs on to the principal's whole school goal, and that makes up 5% of the individual's evaluation. It is a community goal essentially. And then the balance, the extended 40%, is part of the observation cycle through this local lens for teaching and learning that we've referenced a couple of times here.
Is it possible for the Board to get sort of an advanced copy of the survey for comment on?
Sure. Absolutely.
I would love to see that, to make sure that we're all, you know, on board.
Yep. The one that went out this year was a result of the bullying legislation and the Safe School Climate Plan, but before we send out anything that would be revised next year, we'll absolutely make sure that that goes by the Board before it goes out for public consumption and response.
Okay.
Yep.
From the standpoint of any survey is only as valid as integrity of the way in which it's worded and the cross-checking that goes along with it, and that's probably part of what you're wondering, to make sure that we can do as good a job ourselves and have some oversight.
It's probably worth noting, the one that we used this year was gleaned from the model that the state provided for the Safe School Climate connected to bullying legislation. We now have a second one that they have put out that is around the evaluation components, and we're looking to actually combine those together. And in fact, I've started doing the legwork to see which districts have already combined those two, already have them in electronic format so that we're not recreating all of that work locally ourselves. If some other smart people have already hybridized those two surveys into one, we can learn from them and take from their work, which is hopefully my intended approach rather than doing it from scratch. And the last thing I'd like to mention is that the committee has put a lot of time and effort into this. There's a lengthy committee, including Mrs. Dudley, who has put a lot of time and effort into this, and I do want to thank all of the people who contributed to the work. It's been a lot of work across this school year.
Important note, so to reiterate again, and Barb, I doubt you're having another meeting again because now that things have been concluded, but out from Paul here and directly from the Board to thank all those who have participated in that, to put their efforts into it so we can turn around and continue to better our system and keep up with both the standards and go to greater lengths than what is expected and hopefully have a better result in the long term as well. Thank you. So with that, we have a motion that's made in seconded already to take and pass this on to the state, and it is due up there by June 21st in the report here. So all those in favor of the resolution to do so, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Gary, thank you very much for Paul and for, and the committee for following up on that. Next one, 9.7, is to act on the math curriculum.
Okay. Last month, we did present to you the draft math curriculum, and Maria Carrery, our math specialist, as well as Donna Podlinsky, the chairperson of mathematics at Guilford High School, is here. In case there are any questions that you have, I know that many of you have been having conversations with people around how do we make sure that we are supporting high-achieving mathematics in our district and to make sure that students are not bored, that they're continuously challenged in mathematics in appropriate ways. And we are continuing to have that conversation as well as resources to support it. But just to remind you, the curriculum is not how we teach, it's the what that we teach. It is in grade level expectations, but that doesn't mean that a child may fit, you know, exactly within their grade level. These are going to be the general expectations that we have for students, but some may be, you know, at different points within the grade level. And there were some concerns around the actual charts saying, "Oh, my child's going to be spending, you know, 12 weeks on this particular unit." That is just approximate, but I think one of the things that are going to be really important is to look at the pie chart, not in that that's the number of weeks, but that's pretty much the way the year should be divided up so that there is a good chunk of time on the focus of the grade. And then there's going to be some other chunks of varying sizes of some other topics. But we really want to focus where the standards focus, and so when people talk about, "Oh, you're going to spend that many weeks," it's not just about a particular unit, but it's really about going deeper and deeper and deeper with that unit. And that, those numbers are arbitrary at this point. They're approximate. We're going to be adjusting this as we go, but we wanted to give teachers some guidelines because they ask us for guidelines so that they can work together and really try to do a better job. And I like to refer to this draft as an educative draft. I think that's how I described it last month. And it does support teachers, but also to know that it is not set in stone and is not finished. As we implement, we may be making revisions. We would come back. We will also, once it's approved, we will start really exploring additional resources to implement it because the resources that we have now may or may not be the ones that we want to use in the future. But until we really land on the what, you know, the resources to support them and the professional development will be coming next. So it's not a perfect thing that you can just imagine, say, "Okay, oh, wow, now we're doing this." But it is a guide and a support to teachers, and it's also the expectations that we can share with our community that says, "Okay, this is what we expect, and we expect it to this level at least, if not more." It is the floor, it is not the ceiling. And it is, and I always talk about it as it's an upgrade from what we have now, in my opinion. So any questions for-
Okay, so we're at the point, I know there's been a number of, you know, emails back and forth and questions answered that way of technical pieces of it, but here's a chance for the final one. Hopefully, we can prove this tonight unless there's something new and astounding. Chris?
Couple of questions. I think you may have answered this, but I was unable to articulate it to someone who was asking me. Everyday math, is that considered a curriculum or a method or-
It's a resource.
No, it's just a resource. It's like a textbook. It's a program.
Okay.
And are we going to continue to use it? We're not sure because once this is approved, we've got to look at it against a lot of other resources. Right now, according to this document, because it's a resource that we have in our schools, we have identified some of the components that are very supportive of particular units, so it's not like marching through, but you might be going to this unit and this unit and this unit. Maria, you want to come up and-
We've taken that resource and cross-referenced it to our curricular expectations. We're not buying a book and marching through from page one to page 200, but it's a resource in the classroom that's been cross-referenced to our document.
Maria, you would like to address just a little bit about how you've used everyday math and what you think the future or what the next steps are with our resources.
So one of those components that I showed you last month was pulling all of the various resources from different places for teachers, so pulling out all the lessons that match up with Unit 1, along with other strong resources that we found through all the other states who are going through the exact same process, and we'll be adding to those as more states are releasing strong lessons and supports for these units and these standards. So right now, it's just sort of piecing it together and then helping teachers to put that into a comprehensive order as they march through these units for next year and explore. And they've really been enjoying fleshing out the everyday math piece into these more rigorous lessons that they're finding, and it's, I was not sure how they would take unspiraling everyday math and pulling out lessons here and there, but they, a lot of them are really feeling strongly that their lessons are going better, the kids are learning more, that it feels like stronger teaching. So I think they're feeling supported by those extra resources, but glad that everyday math hasn't been completely pulled away from them. And Connected Math in the middle schools is still also, in the exact same way, we've pulled out the lessons that match, and those really well-aligned still. There are pieces that aren't covered, but the way that the instruction is presented in Connected Math still fits really well and is serving those, especially as we're looking at the students as they're taking these practice tests. I've heard many teachers say, "Oh, I can see where Connected Math is now serving us well as they're working on these stronger, more rigorous type of questions."
Thank you. No, that's helpful. As some of you know, I've had a lot of communications about this from various people and have had conversations with Maria and Ann about this. One of the things that we talked about was the possibility of, and again, as Ann said, it's not really the what, but the how. But I think that is important. The way that the curriculum is laid out does read very specifically, for example, that, you know, acceleration starts in seventh grade and that algebra will generally be available in eighth grade. And I have some reservations about that, as I've expressed to you and to the Board, specifically regarding a well-defined grade level curriculum that basically, you know, for some students who might be, you know, able to move faster, that they're then expected to double up in high school if they want to make the highest levels. So sort of pending that addendum or supplement or whatever you want to call it, that I think really we need to address assessment throughout the grades, enrichment opportunities, and communication about how the curriculum may affect people as they get to the higher grades. Those are some of my concerns about the curriculum as written, although I do understand that you're stating it, you know, it's a floor, not a ceiling. The way that it's written is very specific about the grades, so those are some of my concerns about the way it's written.
And I think those are components that we can continue to flesh out as we move forward. I guess I would be concerned that we agree that we can continue working on this document moving forward, but that we really do need to approve a document so that we can keep moving forward. I would ask that the Board approve what we have and then hold us responsible to continue working with the document and refining the document, engaging in conversations with our community about those elements, but give us the opportunity to adopt a really well-done document and move forward with it.
So when, you know, usually when you put something out like that, obviously, things change sometimes sooner than later. At what point do you think you're going to be complete? I know it's a living document, it's always going to keep changing, but at some point, you're kind of over the hump and kind of looking towards the back, the tail end. Is that something you guys are looking to do before the end of the year, so next year you're in really good shape?
I think the general framework is complete now. I think the areas are, we're going to continue to build resources and identify the resources that align with and are cross-referenced to the units, and I think addressing some of the concerns-
The assessment tools.
The assessment tools, and then the idea of pacing for the really unusual student who has mastered both the breadth and the depth that we're looking for, and then what do we do for those students and how do you adjust those?
I think you put it well, that we're approving something to keep moving on. This obviously is not a book that's going to go sit on the shelf somewhere once tonight's over, so I think that's important to note.
And if you recall, there's all the other areas now where teachers will have access to resources that are not just there for the public to see. I mean, some very secure resources and some assessment tasks through an intranet resource. And so now, as a result, the English Language Arts is going to have to put up some intranet resources for the teachers as well. It's the social studies and the world language and PE and science and all the others. So this is the first document that we've had that has been chock-full of the resources. Donna, you want to mention anything that's going on about the high school? I know you guys have been working on some exciting work too around the pilot and some of the, and being on the cutting edge of some of the state work.
Yes, the algebra curriculum that you have in your binders is actually the state's pilot curriculum. The legislature mandated when they were going to put in a three-year high school sequence with end-of-course assessments eventually, that they also produce a curriculum, and that's what we've been piloting this year. And we have found it incredibly successful. The materials are very rich, very deep, big emphasis on conceptual understanding and always taking things back to context. So not just solving for x, but what does it mean in the context of the problem? There's a lot more rigor in there, and so we're very pleased with it. We can't wait for the geometry and Algebra II, so we came up with our own models and hopefully the state follows us. Now ask the state for a change. In terms of resources, we have the Prentice Hall for Algebra I, we have the Holt for Geometry and Algebra II. There is no Common Core resource. There are just old resources they stuck a sticker on and tried to sell. A little bit, what they're doing now is putting out information, because the fastest way they can get it out to people who own already the textbooks is through websites. So what you'll find on the Prentice Hall website is that there's a new section that gets populated more and more all the time with resources for Common Core, and that's where we're drawing a lot of our work from.
Well, I'd like to commend the work that's gone into it on behalf of the committees and the workshop that you did for you for Board of Ed last month, and previous to that, the introductions you've done and some practical applications that you put us through as a board. Some people appreciated, did not appreciate it, but put a negative right in the positive there of experiencing that. But again, we're stepping onto upgraded expectations. I think it's only appropriate that we continue to work at that. And I mean, part of it relies, I think, going back to decades ago when many of us were in school where you had a textbook, but then, you know, one of the objects was to go through the whole textbook you had to cover, and that was, quote, your curriculum, but then you skipped various parts because of either time or it was, you know, inappropriate. I mean, you're now basically extracting the appropriate parts out of resources and designing pieces that really fit what needs to be learned, that no curriculum has a lock, or no textbook facility has a lock on doing it right or in every situation. And going back to the comment of people's feedback from the public, and we do want to continue to get those, Chris has reflected on some, and other people's had some emails on them, to go back to our goal as a district, that academic rigor for all our students, and that's what we want to have take place every day in every class. And when you think about applying that to the curriculums, then that's what we want to have happen, and whether children are able to cover things faster than what is it that they're given in their classrooms, the supplemental material to keep them challenged, and those who are a different place of it will take and receive the attention that they need in order to get the foundations that are needed without holding up the classroom's ability to administer all the children. So thank you very much on behalf of the Board. And with that, can't recall, did we have a motion?
We need a motion.
So you have your motion by Gary that made?
So moved.
Okay, thank you very much. And Sarah, would you like to second?
Seconded.
Barbara on that, to adopt the math curriculum that was presented to us last month and just discussed. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Very abstained.
You're going to stay?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay, one abstention. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to go on to 9.8, which is receive for possible action recommendations from the Policy Committee, and we've got four separate policies. And I would take it that- Barbara, you're ready to-
Well, I'll start with new policy 4110, staff-student non-fraternization. This policy has already been kind of reviewed by our attorneys. It was seen to be an area that we needed to have a policy for, and we, as the committee, looked at similar policies from several other districts, as well as the Cabe policy. We reviewed other- carefully very other policies and agreed that this policy covered what we wanted it to cover. And so, I would ask you to receive this policy for staff-student non-fraternization policy first.
Okay.
And then you will have the month to review it and before it's voted on to accept.
There was nothing like this in our policies whatsoever?
Yeah, no.
It's really an addition, just as best practice around HR. It was something recommended by Cabe, something that our labor attorney suggested, and as we look at restructuring the HR office, looking at our hiring practices, procedures, this was one of the areas that we thought was missing in best practice to have such a policy.
I was just surprised we didn't have anything to begin with.
And obviously, a lot of things like many of our policies and already covered in state law, and it's just a matter of adopting the references to that. So, we're covered from a more thorough legal standpoint of what we're doing and have the tools to take and educate our staff and use in that aspect of HR.
There is a Code of Ethics policy in our policy manual. This kind of specifies very specific kinds of issues, and we felt that that way it would be- the expectation was be very, very clear, not just for teachers, but for other staff members as well.
Looking at this fraternization in electronic commerce, for example, if they were friends on Facebook, would that be a violation of the policy?
It could be. We do recommend that as a professional, that it shouldn't be- you shouldn't be friending your students on Facebook.
Yeah.
We don't think that that isn't appropriate.
I mean, it's interesting, because I think some people just use Facebook as a way of-
But we're exploring an in-house social network that would be more of an academic network, so that teachers could have an academic space through which they could contact and communicate with their students, but it would be an appropriate student-teacher relationship, not a friend relationship that, you know, even the wording of it, you know, students are your students in an academic arena, they're not your friends outside of the school setting, and so we need to be cautious about that.
And I think you have to be very careful, because as a friend, you might have access to a lot of photos, a lot of, you know, of personal information that really isn't-
Yeah, I'm just asking for clarification. Do you know if that is going- I mean, it's an interesting area, because, I mean, certainly employers, I mean, it's the same- some of the same issues and us with our residents and this and that. But do you know if that's happening now? Are there friends, staff members that are friends electronically?
There could be.
We encourage our staff members not to have-
That's very explicitly-
But we have no policy that regulates that.
I think it just might be helpful, I mean, it doesn't have to be in the policy, but just to communicate sort of exactly what you mean.
That's why we wanted to put this in.
The newly formed-
But that's what I'm saying, it doesn't, you know, it could be interpreted.
No, but the newly-formed Technology Committee, in fact, has an item to discuss social networks, appropriate academic networks that could be brought into the district, and an ancillary social network policy that may need to be written to more specifically speak to those areas.
And I think the regulation there, that one through 12 clarifies a lot of areas as well.
Yeah, I have a problem with some of the regulations, because I think it's too broad. For example, Item 10, "Staff members shall not attempt to counsel and so on a student's personal problem." Well, social workers and psychologists are staff members, and that's their job is to counsel. So, I think it's too broad.
Okay, other quick comments on that, or that, I mean, this is the whole purpose, then, of our, you know, bring it forward now and have a review period, so things that the committee can get back to consider and be weighed in and modifications that are needed due to common practice, job functions, how that would be handled?
Well, that's a good note.
I think the- when the Policy Committee welcomed a close eye on this one, in particular this regulation, we found some items to take out. It's the devils and the details and these type of things, and though we remove some and use the Cabe policy, you're going to find things and think of things each of us individually. That'd be welcomed. I think it could bear some further, and probably more in the line of deletions than additions in my mind.
Or further definition, who wants a staff member? But in general, if you don't have a policy on this, we should, and it's late, but better late than ever. I think that's what John was hinting at.
I think, and I was on the- I'm not in the Policy Committee, so maybe I'm jumping in too quick here, but I think there are areas that things are covered in other places at different times during our cultural revolution of, you know, change over the, you know, decades of policy, is this is then pulling it together in what, one place that makes it look well, you know, that, what do you mean, we didn't have it as opposed to what both common sense, state law, and other practices pulled together. But now-
But modern-day world and events that are happening are making us be much more clear, state it much more-
Right, absolutely.
So that it- there's no question.
Yep. Okay, so, we'll take and put that on for received, oh, motion to receive this.
And the Policy Committee can take a look at that regulation again before the next meeting and review it as well.
Okay, so, motion to receive?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Just to receive.
Just to receive.
You don't have to do.
Yeah, actually, we don't need that motion.
You don't have to vote on it.
On the agenda, so.
You don't have to vote on it.
Okay. Okay, 9.8.2 is Dr. Dan, we both talked about both of them together. So, now we're on to number three, which is 5128, Revisions to Cell Phone Usage.
We, student use of beepers and cell phones. We had to change it because, I mean, today it's outdated, and so we've kind of talked about personal- that was the old policy, talking about personal communication devices. And if you look down through, there's really a big change. Students are encouraged to use electronic personal communication devices for instructional purposes under direction of a faculty member. Are allowed to use devices when and where appropriate, determined by the school administration. The Guilford Board of Education is not responsible, as we're saying, for loss or stolen. And it goes on talking about the need for looking at this differently. The district leadership team has already reviewed the policy, so all those in the schools have reviewed it and had input into these revisions. The committee also reviewed policies from other districts, and therefore, we kind of cobbled things together that we thought stated it as clearly as we could. One policy to address instructional use of personal electronic devices at school with students.
Interesting how time has changed, right? The policy that we're X-ing out, language that we're X-ing out is, "Students may not possess," and what we're putting in is, "Students are encouraged to use."
Yep, from 2007 to 2013.
I would say we're particularly excited about this. This is the idea of helping students learn how to positively and appropriately leverage technology for their learning. So, no longer are we afraid of students bringing technology to schools because it might be distracting. We want to have them bring it into school so that we can leverage it in the service of learning. To me, this is an exciting change, and Mr. Kaysen, you just pointed out exactly the language change that I wanted to highlight. We're going from prohibiting to encouraging the use of these under direction appropriately, so they learn how to use them properly.
You mentioned on here regarding that based administration of that school. Is there any kind of, and this is policy, is there any determination yet in terms of the schools? Like, I assume this is not going to be freewheeling cellphones in second grade type thing. I mean, have we kind of come up with a higher level guideline?
Absolutely. You know, the high school already has in their handbook sort of expectations about where phones and devices may be used for communication purposes in school and throughout a school day. They're not used for communication or for recreation in a classroom setting, but they may be used for communication. So, yes, and it would look very different from an elementary level to a high school level. We had looked at policies that broke that out specifically by grade level in policy. We felt that it made much more sense. You see how it evolves. Our still has the word beeper in it. We didn't want to be so specific that we would be back every six months revising at this level, but giving that sort of latitude to the building administration to differentiate between types of devices, how devices could be used, where they could be used properly and appropriately, and that will be leveled at each school.
So, that's going to be communicated through the student handbook at each school?
Yes, through the student handbook, through the back-to-school assemblies, letters to parents, yes, all of those components. Better there than in policy, so that we have an umbrella and don't need to do those specifics annually. The handbooks are edited annually.
I like that third paragraph, too. "The use of personal technology to access educational material is not a necessity but a privilege. A student does not have an unlimited right to use his or her device while at school or on the bus. When abused, this privilege may be restricted or devices can be confiscated." So, if they're used inappropriately.
I think one of the most exciting things about this policy is that we have an opportunity to help students develop skills to be responsible digital consumers and users here. And, you know, before, we were saying, "You can't have a cellphone," and so, you know, you've got a kid looking at their cellphone for whatever reason, and why not embrace that in a positive way, under the direction of a teacher, but not requiring all kids to have a cellphone by any shape or form or fashion. But if students are working in a group and they're trying to research something and the teacher says, "Well, why don't you check this study?" You know, and they say, "Oh, okay, I can do that on my smartphone." And come back and report to us, and so they can work together on those kinds of things, which really makes it a valuable tool for their work, not just now, but, you know, for the future.
Are we planning on providing tools and devices to children that might not have them?
No. Not a-
No, for use in school.
Well, I think it could be analogous to the way that calculators entered into the schools, and I can remember when a calculator was not allowed in the classroom. It was something-
Because that was cheating.
Yes, you know, and then it got to the point that a teacher might have three or four calculators in her desk, and she said, "Now, everybody's going to be working in groups. Does every group have access to the appropriate calculator? And if every group doesn't have one, you come borrow one of mine. I've got three or four in the classroom." So, we are not intending to be purchasing cellphones for private student use, but will there be a point where a teacher has three or four tablets or some sort of smart device at hand, and each group is using- one group is using an iPad, one group is using a Galaxy phone, one group is using a Note, one group- there's going to be a variety of tools, and the teacher may certainly be able to supplement and say, "If this group doesn't have one, here you go. You're going to use mine for class today." I think a calculator's what makes me feel old, but I think a good analogy.
Slide rules.
Certainly, one of the things that those of us who've attended conferences over the last couple of years, and maybe longer, I've only been on the board for a year and a half, more and more, we're noticing that some of the seminars and conferences that are provided as workshops are about this issue exactly. How to use these devices in the classroom? How to use them in the school? How can teachers really leverage, you know, all these kinds of digital equipment in the service of really improving student learning? So, it's certainly a national trend, it seems.
And Dr. Myers, it speaks to a question you asked earlier. I had a very informal meeting with an employee of Google who talked about the ability for any classroom teacher to customize a set of readings and a set of resources and a set of texts that could include, you know, primary source and written, but also video and visual, and simply provide those texts to any student on any sort of tablet or smart device. We're not there yet, but clearly, that's the direction that we're going, and the idea of enfranchising students to use their personal devices rather than- I think it's interesting how we've evolved beyond the one student, one computer. It's not the idea of a school district being responsible to get a tablet in the hands of every student. Many students have access to that, and they can bring those in, and it's the idea of the school district making sure that everybody has access to that, but that's different than providing on a one-to-one basis. But we may soon be at the point where all the materials are digital. You come in, tap the back of your tablet to the back of that teacher's tablet on the first day of school, and you now have your documents for the first day. We're not there for this September. I'm not suggesting that that's where we're going to be as we roll into next year, but that is a vision that we should be working towards.
You know, if you look around this room, it was four or five years ago, we would have been rare to see a board member or a staff member with an electronic device, and now, the majority of us are sitting here with our tablets or computers or portable devices, cellphones. And it's, for those of us that have it, it makes life easier and lighter, of course, we carry less material, but it's much easier for me just to scroll and find what I'm looking for. Others don't have that, and that's fine, and they have the paper and the more old-fashioned way of doing it, but they will join the 21st century. And I think that that's the way we're moving with the kids in school, that most of our kids, or a lot of our kids, are very sophisticated and owned these devices at home and use them for their homework and other things. So, gradually, that will be incorporated into the 21st-
I mean, what's the old-fashioned, you know, note-taking and where those notes get taken now, and whether I've taken on my laptop here, I pull out my smartphone, and I've got my Evernote that is there, and they're linked up together, so as soon as I type it in, then it's on my tablet when I'm using my tablet, and it's all commonly linked together as opposed to, well, you know, does it look like, then, you're using your phone to be texting inappropriately during a meeting or a classroom situation, or you're just there taking notes, and that's what needs to be done for learning? So, I- part of it is just that mental state of what the appearance of what you're doing is. Does it look like you're distracted, or you really are learning and enabling your ability to do better?
Well, and one of the things I think as a member of the Policy Committee, you know, it is really important that the first line here says, "Under the direction of a faculty member." That also means, obviously, that a faculty member can say, "We are not using these in this lesson. We are not- we are taking a test. Everyone get them up on my desk." You know, I mean, there- teachers have the ability. This is a proposal that allows teachers to help students use the technology and also allows them to say, "That's not what we're doing right now." So, I think that's an important distinction.
Teachers are in control.
This is- this is right. This is the opportunity for teachers to work with students, but the teacher is still able to kind of decide when that happens and when it doesn't.
Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is removal policy 5722.
Well, from this old-fashioned person, I'm reading that we are recommending removal of this whole policy because it's already, its contents are in law, it's unnecessary, so we cannot supersede the law, so we don't need the policy. So, we're recommending removal of that whole policy.
Okay, and again, that's a received, so that we'll have these four policies all on the agenda for next month, as long as the Policy Committee has reviewed them and recommends no substantial changes that we don't need that further time to do. Okay, on to number 10, unfinished business. Is there anything under that category? Is there anything under that category? I had a question, I don't need the answer right at the moment, but with just, with light of the snow days, and I think we are within days of our original calendar of actually finishing up school, unfortunately, compared to what Mother Nature, et cetera, did to us this past winter. Graduation for those who were not up and have people that are connected with it is Wednesday, June 26th, on the town green, as our normal tradition is, and it's been decades that it has not been on that green, that location. Hopefully, that will be true again for this year. So we, it's a public event, the public is invited to come out to the green for the ceremony that will begin at 6:00. Graduates start marching in at that point in time. In connection with that, the staff makeup days then have been different this year resulting from that, and they are doing some extra time at the end of the calendar for the PD time.
The student, the student calendar concludes on Wednesday, June 26th. Staff work through Friday, June 28th, and then are released for summer.
Short stuff.
Okay, number 11, reports to committee. Policy Committee, nothing further you have? Facilities Committee, John?
Yeah, Cliff's not going to be in on the week of the 24th, so we might try and move that facilities subcommittee meeting to maybe one of the mornings, either, I don't know, I think next week is probably too early, so it might be the, you know, I don't know, we'll have to, we'll have to, we'll have to see.
Okay, yeah, we sent out an email to.
She sent us an email.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, well, I just haven't figured out when. It might be the end of next week in the morning or something like that, next Thursday morning. We've got to do it the week before, that's all.
Okay. Finance Committee, we've been earlier, anything else that you'd like to fill in?
Mrs. Renner, myself, staff, and Kim Brockett from the Board of Finance have a meeting tonight at 5:00 to go over formats for financial reports. We've got about 20 reports from other districts that we looked at, some more similar to ours, some were better, some were worse. We generated a lot of ideas. We will meet again and then presented a template of a new financial report to the boards for review and to the Board of Finance. It's good that we work together with them and come up with a common way. So that's, otherwise, the end-of-the-year projections, which are coming up soon, not the projections, but the end of the year is coming up soon, looks unchanged from what we've been working with, and that is, we will have a very small surplus at the end, or unexpended funds at the end of this fiscal year, which will be returned to the town. And we will entertain, as we had in the past, a motion that it go into a capital nonrecurring fund, but it is really up to the Board of Finance as to what they do with it.
I just had two comments. One is, when you look at reports, you know, the, one of the key phrases always is that, you know, statistics don't lie, statisticians do. So it's all about how you actually present the data and what it looks like. So that's very important to look at when you're obviously going through it. And the other thing is, I, just from a personal standpoint, I'd like to see more, some more historical data and trending data as opposed to just single point-in-time data.
So, based upon that, I think it'd be appropriate to take and make a motion on your last statement there that was discussed in the Finance Committee, that any surplus funds.
Why would we wait till after the fiscal year ends?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have those numbers at this time.
You don't know what the numbers are now? Okay.
No, we'll need a couple more weeks.
But just to keep that thought in mind, as far as the recommendation request to the Board of Finance, it is only a request, as Dr. Meyer did say in that regard.
Has there been any more discussion about the possibility of establishing a capital fund?
There's, the mechanism is already established, it's a matter of funding the pot.
The last time I look, there is a fund, and if I look at the audit, annual audit, there is a fund. It has a negligible amount of dollars in it, and it is up to the town to fund it if.
You know, I've talked to the Board of Finance, they're not opposed to it, it's just currently there's a higher priority associated with.
Okay? Got rid of the feedback, so we can continue.
Okay.
Okay. Building Committee, anything there? We did mention earlier on, the groundbreaking ceremony for the new high school took place there on last Thursday at 1:30. It was a great ceremony to have that come together, had four students participate along with four administrators, representatives of the, of the town, and the groundbreaking on the baseball field behind the high school here. It was succinct, 20 minutes, took care of it.
Very exciting.
Which was nice, and some great words by First Lachman, by Rick Masenti, our high school principal, Paul, and also Chair of the Building Committee, or Co-Chair, Barbara Casey, of the Building Committee, representing them. So.
Did they take that at all?
Yes, it was, and so I assume it's going to be out of public access if it isn't already. So it's not up already, but it will be up forthcoming on public access and GCTV, so.
Mr. Masenti said it would be on the high school website. Immediately, I'm sure. Immediately, I'm sure.
Yep, so it was very nice, that's a great culmination, and as somebody reflecting this challenge of, when did this process start? Well, then, you know, look back in, I think, in back in time, well, to try and put actual birth date to the, to the process. It's just a goal, because around 2000 was the year in which the Adams Middle School proposal was developed, and 2003 is when that proposal was voted down by the town to not have a replacement at a middle school adjacent to Baldwin. And then the development, Anne was here for this, so he over, and then the Community Task Force on School Facilities was established by Sandy Whalen and myself to then say, what are we going to do next? We can't turn around and just all of a sudden ignore the issues we have. And out of that process finally came the high school that was recognized, that the high school was a more needed piece than was what the Adams situation was, that we fixed in other ways. So, short answer here, I don't want to dwell any further, so the next thing on our agenda is any other town committees have liaison, information to come back, Sandy Fields, et cetera. If not, then the last item on our agenda is public questions, and we've got one person that would like to take and have a question. Come up to the mic, please, identify yourself.
This is awesome. This is new. Craig Mullitt, 146 Tupelo Lane, here in Guilford. And I'm speaking tonight as a concerned parent of two students in the school system, and I would like to request that the Board of Education consider later start times for both middle and high schools in our town. I've reviewed a lot of the research in this area, and there's overwhelming evidence that starting high school and middle school later increases student academic. The latest research published in Carolina is the summer of 2012. It was published in the Economics of Education Review, and it showed that the latest start times in the study contributed to a percentile point increase of 3.8 for mathematics, and, sorry, 3.7 for mathematics and 2.8 for reading. So these are significant to the 99 percentile in terms of the confidence level of the researchers that changing school start times will in fact improve academic performance. In addition, the Journal of Clinical Sleep Medicine did a study that showed that there was a 24% difference in teenage traffic accidents rates when school start times were moved an hour later. And here in Connecticut, Walton took the lead in 2003 of being the, one of the few school systems to go it alone and actually change school start times. And I was in communication with the Office of the Superintendent of the Walton School System, and they have had a very good experience with the change. They sent me a chronology and a pretty detailed analysis of how they approached it, how they approached the issues, including busing, sports, and all the other issues that are associated with moving start times. And there's also a study that the Norwalk Hospital Sleep Disorders Clinic performed both before and after the change. They changed their high school start times by 40 minutes, and the study showed that high school students got an average of 35 minutes additional sleep, which dispelled the rumor that the students simply spend more time staying up late and don't get additional sleep. In addition, there's a lot of research that has shown that later start times decrease student absences. In fact, the North Carolina study showed a decrease in student absentee rate after the change of 25%, which is very statistically significant. The students, believe it or not, actually, when they can sleep more, actually watch less television, do more homework, have less suicidal thoughts, lower rates of depression, the students are more motivated, and they earn significantly more when they enter the workforce. In summary, Dr. Joseph Burkolt, in reviewing the study that was published last year, makes the argument, and this is what I'd like to leave the board with, that in the area of student academic achievement, changing school start times is the rare opportunity that is so simple and inexpensive that it presents itself today. So I have copies of these studies, hard copies, that I'll give the board, and I will make sure that Dr. Freeman has electronic copies that he can certainly circulate, and I would like the board to consider this very seriously. It took the Walton School System only about one year from the first public, serious discussion to change it, but there was quite a bit of hesitation in how to approach the subject, mainly because a lot of the research wasn't done at that point in time. There's a lot more research now, both in terms of the absolute results, as in, as well as in how to actually go about doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be sure to distribute those electronic copies to the board.
Do you also have the details that you said the superintendent from Walton, did they share it?
Yes, that's a, they're in there, as well as the normal possible.
Thank you very much, Craig. Appreciate your.
I'll have this electronically to all board members tomorrow.
So, Walton flipped it on its head. Grades three to five now go at 735, and grades six to 12 now go at 815, where before it was exactly the reverse.
Well, that's probably how they handle the bus.
Is sports a big issue there? That's always been the real.
I'm sorry, sports.
It's always been the real.
Yeah, historically, the concerns are the idea of elementary versus high school start times, which students should be out earliest, which students should be home first in the afternoon, and a variety of after-school responsibilities that, that high school students take on, athletics, extracurricular, work, childcare, you know, there's, there's a host of historical challenges that are out there, and I'm interested in, we have had this conversation a couple of times, I've enjoyed the conversation, I'm familiar with the research, and, and don't question the research a bit. It's, it's, there are logistical concerns that have historically kept towns from looking at these sorts of changes.
Let's go ahead and take that under advisement and look at it as close as we can, and doing anything in a consortium-based, multi-town interaction piece makes that probably even easier to break the bubble, so to speak, of what is out there, so.
I'm just interested in, in what you had to share, even in just about the 40 minutes. I think sometimes when we think about this issue, it doesn't have to be a two-hour change to have an impact, that there can be, I would argue, wiggle room that doesn't have to be huge to, to have a positive outcome. And as someone who's waking up at 6:00 a.m. every morning, watching a very tired sophomore at the end of a year, I thought it was a good idea, before I had a high school student, and now I think it's a fabulous, a fabulous idea to watch it unfold in front of me. So, thank you.
There's no question, as a pediatrician, I know that it makes no sense to have adolescents wake up early in the morning, because it's not just your kid, Katie, it's every adolescent.
No, that I get.
And it's, it makes no sense. So I appreciate what the gentleman has presented, I'm looking forward to reading that, looking forward to finding out how Walton did it. And I think we should seriously put this on our agenda to talk about and see if we can make it happen in Guilford, probably in conjunction with our neighboring towns, and do it. After all, we now have a unified calendar with our neighboring towns. It should not be impossible.
Okay, with that, no more further business before, so I ask for motion to adjourn, please.
Sounds good.
Is that a motion?
I heard it's so moot.
Meeting adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.